Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will just make note that we met in executive session to discuss some legal issues with our solicitor, and I will now ask if there's any public participation. This is the time of the meeting where any Radnor resident is welcome to come up and speak on any item, whether it's on or not the agenda. And if there is an item that will be voted on later in the agenda, we will have an opportunity to speak during that time as well. Does anybody care to make a statement?
My name is Doug McCowan, Poplar Avenue. I just want to reinforce how much we need to do stuff at Fenimore Woods, make sure we get that project moving along. We can break it into two parts or three parts if necessary, but I think we need to get something moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Seeing none, I'll move to the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on an item on the agenda? Consent agenda is item 2A through A through H. There are any items on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to remove to discuss in detail?
Yeah.
F? Any others? Okay, I will pull off item F, which is Resolution 2023-115. Authori-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No? Okay. Okay, I'm going to withdraw that point off the agenda. Thank you, Commissioner. And not hearing any others, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor say aye. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Moving to our business agenda. Item 3A is Resolution 2023-118. This is approval of the sewage facilities planning module for one Pennsylvania Avenue single apartment. Mr. Norsini, can you speak to this?
Yes, ma'am. So this is really perfunctory in nature. The applicant is adding one apartment to this address, and by DEP requirements, they're required to do a sewage facilities planning module. This planning module has been before the Planning Commission. It has been checked by staff. This is the last step, asking for the commissioner's signature, and then off to DEP.
Thank you. Can I ask for a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
And a second. Are there any questions from commissioners? Is there any comment from the public? Not seeing any, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. And opposed? Okay. Moving to Resolution 2023-120, authorizing Siler and Drury Architecture to provide professional review and base planning design services for the rehabilitation of the Fenimore Woods stable into park bathrooms as part of the Fenimore Woods Improvement Project at a proposed cost of $12,000. I will start by asking for a motion.
So moved.
And a second. Thank you. Mr. Norsini or Tammy, can you speak to this?
Yes, President. I've got that. Fenimore Woods is a topic we've been discussing for about eight years now. So just a little bit of history. It is a project that was rebooted and revisioned in 2021. It was sent back to the Parks and Recreation Board where a number of goals and objectives were developed. I want to thank the Parks Board for all their efforts throughout the process. Also, members of the community are here today that support the project, so I want to thank them. I know this has been a long road traveled, but I think one that will definitely be worth it as we get through this process. So, and if you'll recall, we did look at the project in detail in March of 2023. There was, as part of one of the goals and objectives, was to restore and rehabilitate the stable building that exists on the park site. If you will recall, that rehabilitation cost was quite excessive, and the board had wanted to have a second opinion look at that. So that's what this resolution here tonight is to do, is to take that second look. Siler Drury is actually here tonight if you have any specific questions for them, but what will happen is their review will include an existing conditions review and a base plan development on the project for definitions of what a base scope would be to rehabilitate that building, and then the generation of some cost estimates behind that. That's what the $12,000 in this resolution would get us. Just to be clear, this doesn't include any documentation development for bidding or for construction or construction administration services. Those would all be subsequent to this process and would return to the board. It also doesn't include any of the site improvements in the park, so this is just the stable. So I want to make sure that that's clear. One of the thoughts is though, one of the original things here that we could vision with saving money might be to negate running to the public sewer that's located down at Paul Road in Shimonie and possibly renovate with septic tank installation. Right now, there's a septic field that exists on the site, so there could be some cost savings there. So we are hopeful that this is going to get us in the direction where we want to go and get this project on track so we can keep moving and then work through the comprehensive design for the rest of the park. So with that, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those. As I had mentioned, one of our representatives, Michael Drury, is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
Maggie, did you have any questions first, since it's your word? Okay. Yeah, I guess this is a question for Maggie. Like, what's the general sense of the community on the stables? Like, where does the community, where's the neighborhood stand? I mean, right now, the condition of the building is just horrible. It's an eyesore, and every time I go by there, you know, I feel like that blue tarp is going to fly off.
Yes, there's less and less of the blue tarp every day. There's a big hole in it right now. I think there have been several community meetings, which Tammy has run beautifully, and there is a nice priority list of which we heard loud and clear, number one is the trees, and the stable came in. Accessibility is a must as far as that. The stable, I think the thought is, is that the wooden portions of the stable are going to be demolished. The blue tarp was put on initially when we kind of halted the, you know, proceedings, actually a month before I came on the board, in order for no further damage, but I think it's pretty clear now that anything wooden is going to have to go, and any hazardous substances are going to have to go. And then a simpler stable, which would just be, as mentioned here, storage, several restrooms, and I think a janitor's closet, would be put on the rock foundation.
Okay, and do we have any estimates of what a repurposed stable will end up running? I mean, I know we have a $12,000 expenditure here, but, you know, I'm sure people have talked ballpark numbers of what it's going to cost, and what would that timeframe be?
So right now, we, so by endorsing this proposal, we're going to get that information. We did have our initial look, as you'll recall, by Gannett Fleming. They did a presentation back in July of 2022 to the Parks Board where they did an extensive review on their own end. The thinking behind the board was the cost was excessive. I think it was $1.2 million approximately. So the thought is, is that we can maybe look at some things like the HVAC that was proposed in that building, some of the wooden trusses, some of the more expensive finishes and things like that to make it a little more civilized for a park bathroom, not quite as what maybe would have been thought is a little bit more extravagant in terms of cost. I don't know what that savings will be. There's a very tough market right now for supplies and inventories that still exists. I know we can probably speak extensively on that with the number of projects going on right now, but, you know, the hope is that we are going to save some money. I just don't know what that dollar amount is until we engage their services so that they can take a deep dive into the building and see what those might look like. But as far as support, I don't think the support by the community has changed. As Commissioner Myers indicated, it was definitely number two on that list, and we spent a lot of time discussing the stable.
And if this passes tonight, what's the general timeframe?
Well, I'll let Siler Drury speak to that, but I think probably within a couple months we're going to have a good idea. And then, at that point, we can make a decision. If we like what we see and what we hear, we can engage them further on a more extensive proposal to put a design together that would actually be bid ready and construction ready, and then would also include administrative services once we would go to construction.
Which would be a 2024 project or a 2025 project?
I think realistically, we're probably at least at the end of 2024 into 2025 at this point, just speaking realistically on timeline, because we still have the broader design of the rest of the park that we have to engage, and the thought would be is we would bid those both together, as we had attempted to do, obviously, in March, and this is where we did the reset on the stable.
Okay. Thank you.
Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Farah?
Thanks. It's more of a follow-up to what Commissioner Abel said. I guess my fear is that we've done study after study after study with this, and it's no fault of your own, Director Cohen, you've had, what, maybe 15, 20 meetings? Every time you have a meeting, sometimes the priorities will change and you're kind of, it's like a wild goose chase. So I guess my question is, and I don't know those numbers, and what those numbers were maybe September, August, I'm sure they've changed, interest rates have changed, supplies have changed going forward. So the $12,000, I don't think it's going to, it's not material, although at this point, every dollar that is going to another study or survey, you know, whether it's mold or, or I forget what we were, there's tons of studies, it becomes material. So I guess my question is, are we going to run out? Like, I don't want to, I don't want to keep even these tiny nickel and dime ones on top of the ones that are several hundred thousand, and then we delay and it's got to get massaged and everything. I don't want to run out of money before we can actually put a shovel on the ground. So I don't know, maybe that may be finance, maybe, I don't know if it's, it's as much Parks and Rec as it may be finance or engineering, it's probably all of you, so I don't know particularly who to ask, but that is kind of my concern. Like, where does this put us moving forward? Is this going to be another study, or is this board kind of committed to saying, we're going to do something? Obviously, we're going to want to hear what Parks and Rec say, but we're going to do something and get this thing, get this thing going, and it's just not us wasting more time as our budget is going down and material and labor, et cetera, are going up.
One thing I will say is that I think engaging Siler Drury at this point, where we stopped working with Gannett Fleming's, I think there's a cost savings we are going to envision just in proposal and review costs. I believe the proposal that we looked at in March, we're already anticipating less fees on which we'll be paying Siler Drury in the long run. So I do think to some degree, there is a savings there. I think at this point, once we do this review, we have to move forward, we have to make a decision and move forward, because we will be compromising additional funding for the greater good of the park. So at this point, we are going to have to make a decision and go forward with what we receive from them, and I feel confident we are going to get that. I don't know what that number's going to be in savings, but again, just looking initially at the proposal fees, we're definitely saving in that regard from what we did with Gannett Fleming.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, if I could just add just a little to that, just to, we had a proposal that Tammy referenced, and that would have provided us enough information to move forward with the improvements on the building. Collectively, we reacted, or we agreed that that seemed a bit heavy in terms of cost. So there is some additional cost in what we're doing tonight to get a second opinion and to get another set of documents that'll allow us to move forward. So there is an additional cost here, but it's one that we elected to take on when we decided a few months ago to seek a second opinion on what the restoring the stable might be. Since the direction from Parks Board and the Board of Commissioners was restore the stable, that's what we have continued to work towards getting at since that time. So there is some additional cost, no doubt about it. As Tammy just said, we are confident that this proposal will give us that second opinion that we were seeking a few months ago when we decided not to move forward with the proposal we heard that night from Gannett Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. White. Can you or Ms. Cohen please refresh our collective memory of how much is in the, like, what's our big budget, right? This is a bond-related park improvement, so what is that amount that we have identified for this project? And then, I think you said it, but if you could remind me what the number was that came into us that made everybody sort of hit pause because it seemed big, so.
So the last number we looked at, as far as what was available on the bond, was $1.627 million, I think was the last number I had from Mr. Tate on that. I'm not sure how that's fluctuated with other projects that maybe haven't gotten done. We certainly intend to apply for grants on this project as well, just a footnote there. And then, I think the cause for pause was really the $1 million plus on the stable, because it's such a large cornerstone of that project total, that we want to try to get that as, you know, low cost as we can, but functional, ADA, up to codes, all the standards that, you know, we know we need in a park bathroom, but not necessarily, you know, maybe to the degree in which it was looked at originally by Gannett Fleming.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
You can get a grant after you issue a bond? Okay, I thought there was some, okay. Can you refresh, what am I thinking of then?
Well, typically, you cannot apply for a grant after you've started a project. So if we were halfway through the revitalizing the stable building, it would be tough to apply for a grant at that point. Since we haven't started yet, it would still be an option.
And we're also just looking at other creative ways, too, that we can engage the Public Works Department as well. I know we've had those conversations, so just kind of bring that to the table as well. If there are things we can get them to do as part of the project, we know that that's another area we want to look at closely, and Mr. Foster's been very willing and able to do a lot of that.
I have just one quick question. We are talking, or what I'm reading here is phrased as two single occupant restrooms, which I talked about long and hard, and everybody heard me talk about gender-neutral restrooms, and it's the way to go. But I was wondering if we couldn't, it may just be a change in phraseology, this is an architect question, if they, you know, it is a family-used park, and if they could be family restrooms, which may in fact require just a snitch more space for, you know, dad and the little girl to go in and use the facility, or that kind of thing.
Don't they all have to be ADA compliant, similar to ENKI, where you need to be able to move around, like, get like a wheelchair in?
So that's funny.
So, yeah, just maybe, I guess, a changing table, something.
Yeah. And that would be required by the code. Thank you, just wanted to be sure we had that.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Mr. Riley?
Yeah, so I've been to a place that they've adapted and reused in Norristown, and the inside of it, it's an incredible building. It's Von C Brewery Company, and it's amazing if you've ever been there, but it's a great reuse of the space. Thanks.
Excellent. Other comments, questions? Any public comment? Any questions? Sorry, any comment from the public on this issue? Mr. Mccone?
Sorry to beat the horse. I would like to think that if you were to use design-build techniques, issue a solicitation for a design-build contractor, you could shorten the process in terms of time and sometimes save a fair amount of cost if you do it right. And I suggest you at least evaluate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We did.
Ms. Cohen?
I think it was because of the multi-prime that that negated the opportunity for that legally.
Other public comment? I am not seeing any. I will call the vote. Nope. Where I did it. That one I remembered. So Resolution 2023-120, all in favor say aye. And opposed? Okay, let's move forward. Thank you. Item C is Resolution 2023-119, Authorization of the Acceptance of Change Order Number Five by N. Abenizio, sorry, Abenizio Contractors Incorporated for the addition of winterization, three inlets with associated piping and the solar lighting system, for the exclusion of bid items of clean imported backfill and the original lighting system and disposal of certain fill materials, for various quantity adjustments, and for the associated time extension for the South Wayne Municipal Park Parking Lot Flood Reduction Project Contract B-22-002 for the net, for the total net credit amount of $379,492.26. I'm going to ask for a motion first.
So moved.
And a second. Thank you. Mr. Norsini?
So, thank you, Commissioner. So the operative word here was total net credit. So this project, through all the trials and tribulations, will now come in $100,000 under the bid in the end, and as a total, between all the contingencies and inspections, we are under budget on the project, I'm happy to say. So this is just to formally, for the board to formally accept all the debits and credits, which come out to a $379 credit, and in the end, the $4.1 million bid price, we're down to about $4 million.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
So you are under budget? How much under budget, and do you have an expectation on how much under budget is going to be when the project is?
So the project is officially, this will officially close and complete the project. We enter the warranty period on certain things. We've actually been in the warranty period on several. So we're going to take a look at what our inspection costs were, because what the board allowed us, it was over $5 million for bid price, contingency, and inspections. So the contingency, we're fine on because we're actually under budget. It's, we're going to tally up the inspections, and I'll get back to Mr. White with that number, but we did, okay.
Great. Other questions, comments? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Excellent. Resolution 2023-107, authorizing the execution of a grant application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority statewide local share assessment grant for the Radnor Township Clean Energy Advancement Project in an amount not to exceed $1 million. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tate, is this yours?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Township has an opportunity to participate again in the statewide grant that the requirements are that it's a project that improves the quality of life in the community. Earlier this year, the board approved our initial application, and with the assistance of our state rep, Melissa Borowski, we were successful in receiving $400,000 of grant monies that were utilized for charging stations and for the purchase of electric vehicles for the police fleet. This is round two of that same grant program, and with your approval, our application will go in this Thursday, and we are continuing on that same theme. We're advancing the mandate under our Clean Energy Plan adopted by the board and continuing to reduce the carbon footprint and expand the electric vehicle fleet, as well as apply for funding to support the expense of the solar panels that we hope to have on this roof, hopefully within the next year, year and a half. So it's all outlined in the information on the resolution, and I'm working with Melissa Kahn to have this submitted by this Thursday with your approval tonight.
Are there questions or comments from commissioners? Is there public comment on this issue? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. And opposed? Okay. Moving to item E, Resolution 2023-121, authorizing the stump grinding, tree removal, and ground restoration work at the West Wayne Cemetery, per the proposal provided by Shriner Tree Care, in the amount of $11,300. I'll start by asking for a motion. And a second?
Second.
Who would like to speak to this? Is this you, Mr. Foster? Jake, do you want to introduce it?
Yeah, I can help tee it up, and then Ricky can take over, or Mr. Foster can take over with the details of the actual proposal. But this goes back, for context, this is the cemetery on West Wayne that the township became responsible for maintaining years ago when the church that took care of it prior went defunct. A petition was passed around and approved at that time, per the state statute, which went into existence at the turn of the 20th century or?
1920.
1920, the year of the, yeah. The Act was 1920. So the township has been maintaining this property in terms of mowing since that time, and I want to say that was about a decade ago. There have also been, and I don't want to steal the commissioner's thunder, but several community organized cleanup days over the last couple of years, where a combination of Boy Scout troops and other community members and Villanova University have helped clean up that site to get it to where it looks today, with a lot of the smaller trees, the vines, and the invasives taken away. That work is, they've gone about as far as you can go with a shovel and a small pair of pruning scissors. So the work that is proposed here is some of the more heavier lifting with the heavier equipment that's needed to get back there and take care of trees and stumps and move the dirt around. And maybe, Mr. Foster, if you could provide a little detail on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. White. What I'll start with, you have the proposal in front of you. Now, just to explain, it was two options there. Now, the first option, which isn't highlighted, was just the lowest baseline, just to go in and just, not even grind the stumps, but just cut them level to the ground. And all of this work that, when we met with the contractor to look into, it was beyond what Public Works can do. So we had to go to an outside contractor to see if they can help, because there was specialty equipment that we did not have access to, and also the gate that was installed was not big enough for any equipment that we do have to fit through. So there was a special type of machine that needed to go through. So just taking a look at the stump process, what we felt was most important was to have the stumps grinded out, so they would be completely leveled to the ground, then enabling us to come behind and add topsoil and seed, so the area would look a lot cleaner. So that was the best option that we felt to go forward with that. Then we also have, there's about three weed trees that are there, and in diameter, they might be not even close to 10 dBh. There's two or three that are in proximity in one circle area, so they would crowd each other out, so we were going to take two of those out, and there were a couple that were by the fence. And when this problem started initially, when we took down, it may have been a couple years ago, where we basically cleaned all of the dilapidated trees down on the property line between the cemetery and the condos, it was because we had a tree fall that ripped down the condo fence and the chain link fence that was inside the cemetery. So after having those cleared, there are a couple weed tree saplings that are starting to grow, so we want to get those removed while we're in there, and also have the stumps grind out, ground out. There's also a metal chain link fence that is stuck in between some of the stumps that are there, so that has to be cut out so that those stumps can be ground out. And there's also an area further up, closer to, I guess would be Graythorne Woods, their property, and the fence doesn't serve a purpose being there. So to remove that- So to remove that as part of the project is something that was included. And the last part that you see in front of you is the lawn areas. In front of the tombstones, I'm not sure how the, the ground kinda became unearthed, but it's, it's, it's lumpy. So we need to get that leveled out, just for safety, if anyone was to, to visit, a family member that may be there. It is a huge tripping hazard. So we do not have the, the equipment, again, to get in to move the earth around to make it all level. So again, that's why that area is on there. So I believe I covered everything that was in the estimate, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you for that. Comments and questions from commissioners? Jake, do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, thank you. And appreciate, um, Manager White and, and Mr. Foster for the explanation and some of the, the historical context, the background, and, and efforts to bring this to the board tonight. You know, I, I realize I came here a year ago and asked that the township take more responsibility there. And at the time, said that, you know, I intended this to be community-based volunteer efforts and wasn't asking for township contributions. You know, fortunately, we've had a lot of community support. We've had a lot of cleanup efforts. And through those efforts, you know, when you, when you clear out a huge space of, of debris and, and overgrown trees, vines, you uncover what's, what's below. And that's what brings us here today. You know, I didn't, I didn't realize we had large tree trunks that were sitting across, sitting on fence lines. I didn't realize that there was a chain link fence in the back that was, that was broken and can, can be considered a, a safety hazard. So, you know, bringing this forward tonight is an effort to allow us to continue the cleanup effort. We don't, I don't know that we can bring more community groups in there. And there is interest to go back in there and, and continue the cleanup and realize the ultimate vision, which is to have a parcel of land, which is, you know, it, it's, it's a clean, it's a clean place and that we can build a, 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 a site in the back where we can have a sitting area. We can have some aesthetically pleasing plants and, and vegetation. And, and just have a nice neighborhood area to go and, and, and enjoy and understand the history of, of, of the community. But, but to do that, we need to get over this hump. And so this $10,000, $11,000 helps us get there and helps us to be able to continue the cleanup efforts next spring.
Other questions, comments?
So I'm curious as to, if you have any sense of Radnor residents using this space? I did a little field trip there. There's no parking. You, you have to park illegally across the street. And I saw no one there. It was a beautiful day. It's a beautiful little cemetery. I happen to like cemeteries. The stumps are all around the edges. They didn't seem to be getting in anybody's way. So there were a lot of vines that could be taken out by your community members. And I do think that the one grave Ricky was, uh, I went around Halloween, so it was really kinda creepy. It almost looks like, I was waiting for a hand to come up and grab me. Could be filled in with wheelbarrows of topsoil. I'm not sure that this is warranted. But I, I wanted to get a handle on, since you know this community, how much use you think this space gets?
Well, I think some community, some neighborhood members go through there. I've had, um, I've actually had a woman ask if it's, um, an active cemetery to, to be buried there. So there, there is interest within the neighborhood. But, but I also think it's, um, you know, we want to encourage community-based volunteer efforts. And this is one that has a lot of interest. And, um, you know, both from civic groups, athletic groups, um, universities. And I, I think the, the more it's cleaned up and easier to access, I think you're gonna see, you'll, you'll see more interest in it. You know, the, the, the next step after it's cleaned up is to get the local schools involved with the Historical Society and to start to re, recreate the plaques on the veterans that are buried there, so that people do know the history of, of who's buried there.
Other questions? Go for it.
So I, I'm under the impression, I remember when this was tossed around a year or so ago, that we were just gonna take custody of it and we weren't gonna spend any additional money on it. And I remember asking this board and members of our staff, and that was the case. So now it's $11,000. And it's not that I don't have a certain feel and, and that these things shouldn't be preserved. But where does, my, 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 my point is, listening to you, I don't know where it's gonna end. We're not in the business of maintaining cemeteries. We're not in the business of, um, coming up with a landscaped garden. It's not to say that this shouldn't get fixed. But I think that you should vet out some of these community groups that wanna do this so bad and see if they could raise the money, number one. Number two is, there's that house, I don't know, there's a structure for sale? So if that gets sold, I don't know who owns that, but I think, and, you know, I'll talk to the lawyer there. The township should get some kind of funding for that, if that's part of that parcel. And then maybe the township could put money in some kind of trust and generate. There's that little, I know, I know that, uh, Tom, I think Tom Lowey is the one that's, um, his sign is on there. Right across from the Italian American Club. So, um, that's one, that's one of my thinking, is that if that is connected to that parcel, and I don't know the logistics it's not, but was that originally part of the cemetery? Or you don't know, was that, was that part, was that a church part of?
I, I don't know any of the history. I know it's not part of the parcel.
It's not, it's not part, it's not part of the parcel.
They have no parking, and there was an inquiry made, it's been two, three months ago, whether or not the township would sell part of the cemetery for parking for that parcel.
Okay.
And you can't do that.
Okay. And then the other thing is a lot, is a, the issue is that if we start fixing it, I was told that we're just gonna mow it. Now we're fixing it. So as soon as we fix it, and I hear that, and pardon me, Director Foster, that someone could trip and fall and hurt themselves. Now we're in the business of maintaining it from a liability standpoint. And I don't think that we should, you know, if we have to mow the lawn by law, then we'll mow the lawn by law. But to start fixing it up, I believe that this would best be done via community organization and not, um, not the township for the $11,000. And granted, it's not a material amount of money, but we're gonna be talking about the budget in a couple agenda items from now. And every penny matters, whether it's fire, or police, or Public Works, or Parks and Rec, or people, you know, elderly people that, um, don't wanna, you know, we're gonna, uh, right now, we're looking to increase our taxes. And I don't necessarily think that this is the best use of money now for this project. Vet it out from local organizations. See if you can get that work done, um, you know, for free or, or, or something from a tree company or landscapers. And vet it out from these community groups that wanna do it. They can have fundraisers. But I think that we weren't gonna get in the business. Now we're in the business, and now we're assuming liability because of it. So while I appreciate everything that you've done, Commissioner Abel, it's just a, it, it's a really a, uh, it's hard for me to, to vote yes right now, when I think that there are other avenues that should be investigated. Thanks.
Could I make a comment? Thanks. So, and, uh, Mr. White said this earlier. In the State Act, May 10th, 1923, when a cemetery is abandoned by a church that no longer exists, maintenance of the cemetery falls on municipality. It's not mowing. It's the maintenance of it. Mowing might be part of it, but it's maintenance. The, the job that we're talking about, when do you think they'd have to do something similar to that again? Like, it, it's not like a yearly thing. This means?
Yeah, I mean, it's, everything that you're asking for, that was requested, is a one-time thing. I mean, if the stumps, trees are ground out, they're not coming back. And the grass will be there, so, and I can't, hopefully that the ground won't unheave again. So I would see, you know, once this is done, it'll be done.
Yeah. So say even, even if something comes back in 10 years, right, this thing's $11,000. It's not that big a deal, deal, deal per year. Like, it's a one-shot. We don't have to do this every year. So I don't, I don't think it's that big a deal.
And, and, and it's really hard to respond to Commissioner Faris' comment. It's really hard to go out and, and talk about in-kind contributions to build the landscape in the corner if the, the half-chain link fence is there, if the huge stump is, is, is in the way. So to clear that corner out, which, you know, the volunteers did as much, you know, we're as far as we can get in, into that back corner. But, but to get to that next step of, of talking to community members about in-kind contributions, we, we just need to get over this one hurdle. And to your point, it is, it is a one-time, a one-time cost. So once, once those stumps are gone, once the fence is gone, once the, uh, once the large trunk is out of the way, and then once the, the land is, is, once the holes are filled with the soil, you know, I think we have the area that we need, which is also, makes it easier to mow. So we are getting probably more bang for our buck, because right now, they're, you know, what we're paying, they're not mowing most of the area back there, because they can't get to it with the mowers.
Let me ask you a quick question, Jake. So, and, and the first thing is, it's a one-time, but I heard it was a no-time. We weren't gonna put any money, we're just gonna mow it, now we're fixing it up. But have you reached out to these organizations? And I'm not talking in-kind, if you could get Shriner, if you could get some of these other tree companies to do this gratis, I think that's great. But have you reached out, and I know that you said that you have reached out to, um, different organizations or the Historical Society? Have you said, hey, let's try to come up with something, um, some kind of fundraiser to do this? Like, you've brought people there to do the cleanup. What work have you done to see if you could raise that money privately?
I haven't done, I haven't made efforts to raise it privately.
Or has anyone made any money? Has anyone in this circle that you're talking with reached out to, um, the Historical Society or these other organizations? I know that you're, that you're leading this charge, and, and I do wanna say thank you very much. It's not that I'm not thankful for it. I'm just wondering what steps you have done to try to, um, you know, look at other avenues, like I said, like the Historical Society. We give them money. We give the Historical Society money. They're probably gonna be in the budget. They're not in the budget this year. Or I, I don't know. But they should be, you know, this is for something that a historical, a third party should take. It's not a part, it should not be something that the government, we should do the bare minimum. And if anyone wants to do something, we should very graciously say, absolutely, let's do it. But I don't think we should be getting in this business. So again, my question is, what, have you reached out to these groups and said, hey, is there a fundraiser? Is there a chance where we could pool resources and raise this money?
I mean, I don't think those conversations have been had. These organizations have donated their time, their efforts. Villanova University supplied and, and donated several hundred dollars worth of equipment to the township. But I don't, I don't know that anyone's talked about doing fundraisers. And, and, and to the point, yeah, I, I appreciate that every, every project is, is, um, you know, there, you, you have to vet every project, but we spend $11,000 on a lot of projects. You know, I don't, who says the township should be in the business of having e-recycling events? But, but that gets funded. So, so I think it's hypocritical and, and a little bit contradictory to say, you know, the township shouldn't be in this business, but we should be in part of this business.
No, I mean, I, I, I disagree with, uh, that statement, just based on, yeah, yeah, it's a back and forth.
It's all right. We're repeating ourselves. I'm gonna jump in here. I have one quick question for you, Mr. Foster. Of this kind of punch list that we're looking at, that's in the packet, which is the estimate, are there things on there that you, if, like, okay. Hypothetically, this doesn't get passed tonight. What would you do in the cemetery if we're not hiring in an outside group? Have you sort of reached the extent of possibilities for public work?
Yeah, um, I would say out of the items that are on here that Public Works could tackle is, um, the fence removal. We could tackle that. And, I mean, the weed trees, they're not huge. I mean, we could remove those ourselves. So out of those two things, um, we could do, and even the lawn areas, we could. We'd probably have to rent a piece of machinery, the one that the company who, um, put in the proposal has access to. We'd probably have to rent one to get in there and do, and do that. But those are probably the three things that we could tackle and take off the, this, out of this equation. The other, the stump areas and the grinding the stumps. I'd rather leave that to the, to the pros, just because of the size and the location of where they are. And some of them have, like I said, the chain link fence in there. So the last thing I'd wanna do is rent a piece of machinery and damage it and have to, to bring it back. So I'd rather leave that to someone else. But the other things could be tackled by us, um, at a later date, after leaf season.
So I'm looking at that would be about, um, the $1,525 for the fence, and then maybe some other things where you'd probably go and spend about $2,000 or $3,000 in rental to, in order to tackle the other items. So we're probably gonna shake out money-wise about the same?
Looking at those three items, I mean, you're looking at about $6,000. And the rental for the, the one machine I would need, I mean, you would at least knock off the $6,000, just for what the price was quoted. And it would just be labor for, um, my staff to get it done, just their time.
So I'm feeling there's, might be a compromise here. Where we lean into our excellent Public Works crew to do what they can with the fence and the other items that you think are, you could tackle. And then really get the grinding and the excavation done by a company. And we're probably now at about half. How does that sit with commissioners? Anybody have a comment to that?
I'll, I'll begrudgingly agree to that compromise. But I'm still not happy. And I still think that, um, we need to look at grants and we need to look at outside organizations that wanna help, that they can, time and, time and labor is great, but sometimes we need resources and money is the, the biggest one. But yeah, I would.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I do think that, um, you know, we made a commitment, I will just speak for myself. We made a commitment when, um, Commissioner Abel brought it to our attention and the solicitor walked us through our obligations to a, um, abandoned cemetery. And I know that some of the money that we spent was money that was donated for this purpose, which was, you know, saved the township, is it $10,000? I, my hesitation is that I don't know how well-used it is, but I think that we're in a little bit of a catch-22. If you have a nicer, well-cut cemetery in a walkable neighborhood, people might use it more. I would love to see what, um, projects we can, you know, we can learn about who is buried there and get the Historic Society started. But, um, anyway, I, I think that it's, it's something I can vote for, especially if we can, you know, we can compromise and maybe, um, lean into our own folks for some of it and, um...
So what you're saying is that you would like to make, uh, you'd like to amend this to say no greater than, say, where are we at, 11,300? So can we say 6, 6,500? Not to exceed 6,500?
I guess the other consideration, Mr. Foster, is would Shriner even take, would they even take a gig that's, you know, $6,000 worth of labor for them? Is it the type of job that they have done for us in the past?
I mean, I would say yes. I mean, they do tree jobs for less than that amount, so I wouldn't see why. And he's a, you know, former Radnor resident, so any chance, I think, you know, for him to do work in the community that he grew up in, he would definitely take that opportunity.
Could, could we just say not to exceed 11,300 and, and leave it on, on Mr. Foster to do, do what he has said that his staff is able to do? And then the other work that he would then look to, to bid out to Shriner's? Not, I mean, because, right now, he's making a promise, not knowing what the true costs are. I mean, we know what the, we know what the maximum is.
Well, I mean, he was going through pretty itemized here, so I, I, I'm comfortable either way. I think what we've...
Well, it's not gonna come back to the board anyway, because it's under, it's under, I don't know, what, Bill, what's your threshold? 7,500?
Yeah, the charter is at 7,500.
Okay, so it's still going to be under your threshold. So I'd like to say 6,500, and then if it exceeds that, then it should, Bill, you can approve it without consensus of the board, without a board vote, but I think the board and the residents should know.
So I'm going to come back in here and say, why don't we put it at his threshold, at 7,500? It's been discussed publicly, people know we're doing it, we can advertise that it's, you know, nice and fixed up. And this way, it doesn't have to come back to the board, but we are trusting our staff to say, to do what they say they're going to do, which they always do, and make the decisions that are necessary to get the job done. And if it can't be done under the manager's authority, it will have to come back to us. So is everybody comfortable with leaving it to be a job done within the manager's authority to spend?
Yeah, we're dealing with 30, no, for me, for, yeah, I know, for me, it's more the principle.
Well, I think, I think that we're going to come in at the amount that Mr. Foster has been able to identify. I lost a little, I lost track in the invoice, the exact amounts, but I trust Mr. Foster that he got it right. But I just, I, you know, the last thing we want for something this small amount of money in the grand scheme of our budget is to have to keep coming back to authorize it. I really just would like to.
He said 7,500.
So I'm going to make a motion to amend it, to say that this work should be done within the manager's threshold limit of $7,500. That is the motion. May I hear a second?
Second.
And on the motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, with that motion, well, that motion's on the table, I will now open it up to public comment.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. One of the things I do is keep track of things that happened. It was the Historical Society who first brought the cemetery to the attention of the township. And I remember Steve Palantonio was involved while Steve was still alive, and what he told us, and I've never forgotten, was that that cemetery was where all the pagan babies were buried. Those were those children who were born who died before they were baptized as Catholic, and they were buried in that cemetery. I think we have an obligation to keep it up. I really do. Because we have no idea who, I know that Steve told me that one of his cbs was buried there. So I don't think it was an out-of-line incident, and I think it's part of Radnor's history, whether it's fully documented or not, that we need to provide a nice place for where those babies are buried. And it is not the only cemetery. The cemetery at the old Radnor United Methodist Church has a grave all the way at the back of a young girl who got pregnant and had the baby, and the baby died. But that was a no-no. And so she and the child are buried at the very back of that graveyard. And I think it's part of our history. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comment from the public?
Ricky, just be really careful when you get that trench and you dig stuff up. We don't want poltergeist in Radnor.
Okay. So now with the amended, let's go forward to get this fixed up between the work of Public Works and Shriner. If we all are in agreement, I will ask for the vote. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foster, for being creative and fixing that for us. Moving to the ordinance 2023-11, this is the introduction, amending the code of the Township of Radnor, Chapter 270, Section 270-28, parking prohibited at all times, and Chapter 270, Section 270-31, special purpose parking zones. I'll start with a motion. May I hear a motion?
So move.
In a second. Thank you. Chief, can you speak to this?
Yes, Commissioners, in reference to 205 and 207 North Eithan Avenue, that's probably the biggest change that we would see. And if you, right at the bridge where the steam plant entrances to Villanova University, across the street, there's two private residences. We've had on our large-scale events, people starting to park there and partially on the grass area, impeding the flow of traffic and also potentially restricting emergency vehicles. So we're, we are requesting the no parking at that location.
Where is that again? Because that's, that's what I wanted to get pulled. Where, on county line?
So right at the train bridge, where the steam plant driveway is?
I think there's two houses.
Like all the mechanical places for Villanovas on one side of the street, the other side is two twins. It's right at the base of the train bridge.
Oh, is that, that's like a, looks like a, like a college house, look like a, okay. That's Radnor Township? I thought that's on the Lord of Mary's side.
It's Radnor. And even the houses, the, I believe it's, I'd have to see them, but the first three houses, when you go around the bridge, are actually ours as well.
Okay, that go up Eithan?
That go up county line, the first three red brick homes are actually Radnor Township's.
Hold on, on, so like if you're going, if you go under the bridge, say toward King of Precious, so on, so on, on the, on the right, those are Radnor?
So if you, the two twins are right there at that bridge abutment, they're the closest houses.
Okay. All right, yeah, okay. I mean, you can't, can you get an emergency vehicle under the bridge anyway? A fire truck or ambulance under the, under the trolley bridge, or the, Septa Bridge?
The ambulances do fit in there.
Okay, but not the, not the fire truck?
Ladder trucks and such do not fit under there.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Is there public comment? Call the vote. All in favor say aye. And opposed. Okay, this passes. And we are moving on to our budget discussion. Mr. White, ordinance 2023-08 is the adoption of the final 2024 comprehensive budget by setting the township realistic tax millage rate and adopting appropriations for 2024. Do you want me to read all of these in and talk to them, or are we going one at a time?
Well, however you'd like to proceed. I'll, I was going to take this one, and then Mr. Tate was going to take the next one, so.
Please do.
So yeah, so for this one, as introduced at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, this would adopt the appropriation budget for 2024. Just to, you know, I had gone through a presentation at the last meeting, I have that with me, I wasn't going to step through that again. Some highlights include, this budgeting has the community support unit that was approved by the Commissioners this summer with the additional police officers and a social worker. It does include the collective bargaining agreement adjustments that were approved at the last meeting as well, as well as funding for our community organizations in a similar fashion as prior years. And how it's being paid for, if you'll recall, we had initially thought a higher tax increase would be necessary when we were discussing our community support unit in the summer. But as we got closer to budget time and got a little bit in, more into the various revenue sources, we were able to increase revenue estimates in the business taxes permitting departmental earnings, grants, and then the last piece of that then is the real estate. And what was included in what the ordinance for introduction was a, a small millage increase of .05 mills, which we had talked about the last meeting, would, would impact the average taxpayer and renter about $34 for the year. And while not significant, it is meaningful to the overall budget in terms of providing, not only, well, balancing the general fund, first of all, second of all, providing a little bit of cushion should any one of those other areas of revenue come in shorter than, or less than what we're estimating. And it also does help, as we had talked about in prior years, with the small incremental increases over time, put a township, put the township in a better financial position should the other revenue areas fall short, the amount of real estate tax needed to, to cover that gap will be that much smaller. So again, while, you know, not tremendously significant in the grand total of all of the different budget items, the, the increase is meaningful to help in those other areas. Yeah, and like I said, I've got the presentation, I could step through any more questions or detail if needed.
Do you mind going through the presentation? Sorry.
This is memorialized before we vote, so quickly.
I'm going to, I mean, the whole presentation?
Not the whole.
That was done last week, and we've all had opportunity to take meetings.
So, yeah.
I think you just did the high level.
Okay, that's fine then.
Is there like a single slide or something that you can pull up that you think is kind of the, the highlights?
Yeah, just take two seconds.
Thank you.
Might take longer to get me switched over to the screens. I have not mastered this process yet. So, let's see if I can get the slideshoot. This is just a quick recap on the revenue side, highlighting the fact that, you know, the, while there is a tax increase included in this budget, it, the additional revenue needed to meet all the expenses is being spread out amongst multiple revenue sources. And we felt that was important, again, not to rely 100% on real estate taxes as the means to balance the budget, but to get a little bit more aggressive in our estimates with some of these other areas. Because quite frankly, the, the reality is, is those revenues are doing better. So we budget more aggressively on those and lessen the need for a higher tax increase, a real estate tax increase. So this table here, which it kind of highlights how that, the additional revenue is kind of spreading the wealth, so to speak. Quickly on the millage itself, this speaks to, you know, the small incremental, the notion of the small incremental increases over time, as well as the fact that while we talk about millage in a very general sense, we are only talking about the Radnor Township piece of the millage. This is not the, the school district piece, nor is it the county piece. Radnor's is the, the smallest of those three elements. And .05, 00 mills equates to a little over 2% of an adjustment from a, you know, what is right now 2.3865. Again, highlighting on the expense side, 60% of our budget is operation, is personnel and fixed costs associated with the personnel, and those, as I talked about, even going back to the presentation, the same presentation in October, where I spent some time going through department by department, highlighting the staff that actually is out there doing the work and providing the service. That's most of this budget. The other larger pieces, the transfers specifically, that, over 3 million of the four covers debt service on our various outstanding bonds. And the, the rest of that pretty much is the departmental fleet and capital replacement program that is included in this budget. So when we get to the general fund operating statement, you, there's a, the expenses are higher than revenues by about, well, at the time I presented this, it was 257. If we recall, we, we did reduce one more element in the capital piece of it, so it was closer to 220,000. The real estate tax increase will generate about 330,000 of revenue, balancing the general fund budget for 2024.
Thank you for that. Are there specific questions from Commissioners on the budget?
Yep. Mr. White, I don't see it on here, but what, what do we have in the, in the reserve fund?
So we started the year with about $12 million in the general fund. We expect to end 2023 with about 10, maybe 10.5 million.
And what's, what's the number we try to stay above?
So the, the policy is 25% of expenditures in any given year. Again, for 2023, that's about 9.2 million. So we'd be, we'd have about a million more than what the policy mandates.
Ask a question. So that 10 million, I'm just going to round it, make it real easy, round that 10 million that's in reserve, where's that, where does that sit?
It's invested in the general fund, and that's the source of most of the interest revenue that we utilize to help balance the budget.
So it's in like a T-bill, getting 5%, I mean, it's, it can generate close to half a million?
Yeah, I, yeah, we can go into as much detail as you want on the investment. So let Mr. Tate run with that.
No, 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 I'm not, I just want to make sure that it's getting a competitive rate, it's not.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah.
Getting a half a percent or something, it's getting whatever the typical T-bill, you know, whatever, because that's what it would need. You can't put it in the money market or CD, it would have to be.
So one of the other policies we have in the, the general code is an investment policy that does limit the types of investments that the township can buy, with the primary goal of those investments being safety over earnings, safety, liquidity, then earnings, in that order. So that limits what we can invest in, but.
Yeah, I think the T-bills hit them all right, right now, what you're getting.
Well, it used to be safe.
So, okay, and, and, and just real quick, Bob, and you too, Bill, do you ever look to see if it would be beneficial to use some of that money to pay off a bond or pay off some of the stuff, or, because we're not allowed to do it? I mean, do you ever go through the exercise at least? That's my question. I'm not saying that you can, but maybe you would need special approval.
Well, the, the process that we do go through on a regular basis, and Commissioner Faris, you've been here long, long enough to have gone through a couple of these with us.
Been here longer than anybody.
When we refund all of our different bond refundings that we've done through the years.
Yeah.
That's us, you know, taking advantage of market conditions to lower the debt service cost. And given where interest rates were for the last 10 years, most of those bonds are at interest rates that we're paying less than what we would earn by investing that money otherwise.
Yeah, no, yeah.
So the, the better use of that money is investment right now.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you look at arbitrage advantages and stuff like that.
Well, yeah, it's not arbitrage.
No, no, not, not that, no, not that.
Proceeds, but.
Well, it could be if you, the money's guaranteed either way.
No, it is absolutely not arbitrage.
Well, if we insure it, and we're, if we insure it and we buy T-bills, they're both guaranteed, and then you get the spread.
Now, the, the money that's being invested is general fund reserves, not the, the debt proceeds themselves. I mean, the debt proceeds are being invested, but those are being managed against the interest that we're paying to avoid arbitrage as we sign off on when we borrow that money. So I don't want to confuse those two issues. What, you know, the, the investments where we earn money that helps us operate comes from the general fund reserves, which is general money of the township, free and clear of any obligations. And in, in terms of the overage of the, the policy, first of all, that's an advantageous position to be in versus, we've had years where we've been under and had to consider tax increases to plug that gap. And we've also seen in any given year, the business taxes of the township can fluctuate by millions of dollars. So it, it doesn't take much of a, an economic hiccup for the township revenues to react drastically. So while we're in a positive position right now, we've seen in other, in three different circumstances in the 13 years I've been here, where that disappears in one year. So it, being in an advantageous position in terms of the policy is a, is a good thing in terms of financial health for the township. And again, I'll reiterate, the, the other times when those business taxes dropped on us, those are usually at times where it is the most difficult to ask folks to pay a big tax increase. The Great Recession at 2020, or 2008, 2009, we were following that up in 2010 and 11 with tax increases of, I want to say 9 and 13% in back-to-back years. And then in a similar And then in a similar position, a couple of years ago with COVID, although we had the fund balance policy, which bought us a couple of years and avoided that situation where we would have again been asking for large double-digit tax increases. So that the reserves are, you know, more than just the policy. We've seen how they've helped avoid large tax increases. And again, small incremental increases over time further mitigate, mitigate against those years where a large increase might have to be contemplated.
You done? I have a quick question. Is the little more than $100,000 under C in the business agenda, is that factored into the budget? He said it was a, some of it was credit to, you know, like a rebatey kind of thing, and then some of it.
Are we talking about the sewer?
No, I'm, well, yeah, the, the item C in the business agenda.
Yeah, so the stormwater project on South.
Yeah, it had a bunch of things. It had the lights, it had a whole slew of things.
Yeah, so that, that's a good question in that that is not directly linked to the tax increase of the general fund budget that we're, we're contemplating with the tax increase. That, that project is.
Just, I'm asking if it's in, in your table here, like have you counted on that money? Or is this really over $100,000 extra that we just found?
So that entire project is funded out of the stormwater project, or the stormwater fund? So the 100,000, any, any project that comes in under or over budget is paid for out of that fund. So really what, what item C equates to is, you know, roughly 100,000 more dollars in the sewer fund, the stormwater fund to address other stormwater projects.
Thank you.
Which is why it's not connected to this, the tax increase that we're talking about with the general fund.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for having to step off. Are there other questions or comments from commissioners? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Did, do public comment? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? I'm not seeing any. I will ask for a motion to approve. And a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, and moving on to.
But you want your 11,000 for a cemetery and you vote no.
Shh, stop. We will move to item B, ordinance 2023-09. This is adopting the sanitary sewer rent rate for 2024. I will start with a motion on this one in a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tate, you want to, who's, Ms. Lacy, thank you.
Yes, Madam President, as we introduced last week, the ordinance in front of you is to set the sanitary sewer rate for the, that part of the utility bill, and that would be at $12.62 for 2024.
And is that an increase from the current year?
It is an increase, yes. This year it is $10.16, so it's about a 24% increase.
But $2 and change?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Or comments?
So I'll be voting for this, I just want to say two things, things, two things that we shouldn't outsource, and I think if you know anything about Chester County, one is our trash, what's going on in Chester County, and the other is our sewer. So I think that because we maintain it in-house, and we're not trying to money grab and try to save a dollar here or a dollar there, I think typically when that happens, you know, it's, what is it, penny wise, pound foolish, or is that what it's called? I don't know, whatever it is. But, so I think that keeping these assets, you know, within the community and within this board and staff, I think is the most prudent thing, and I'd hate to, I'd hate to have to outsource our trash and see our friendly, our friendly trash guys, but the sewer is just as important, so I think they kind of go hand in hand.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Motion passes, and finally, item C, ordinance 2023-10, adopting the township fee schedule for 2024. Start with a motion.
So moved.
In a second. Thank you. Mr. Tate, is this one you?
Thanks.
I have this one. Thank you, Madam President. Again, following up on the ordinance introduced last week, at the last meeting, along with the amendments and corrections as were discussed, and in the follow-up correspondence with the board, the fee schedule tonight has, reflects those changes, and for your approval tonight for adoption.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor, whoop. I already did. Okay. Okay, let's just, let's just do it right. I will ask for a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Did you vote? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. And moving on to reports of, of the board liaisons. Is there any commissioner who would like to speak to one of the boards they represent?
So I just want to make sure that everyone is reminded that this weekend is the elves for the shelves run. It's on Saturday at 8:00 AM, and I hope, you know, people will get out and participate.
When's Santa's Parade? Is that like 11?
11.
Okay, so run and then run up to Santa's Parade.
Yeah, so the run starts at 8:00, and then the parade is afterwards, and taking pictures with Santa, I think, too, at Presbyterian Church.
But, but you don't want to go out the night before and drink too much at the tree lighting, so.
Are there any other reports from board liaisons?
Yeah, there, there, yeah, I do have a couple of things. Because I am stepping off the board, I do want to talk briefly about dogs at the, at Skunk Hollow. And while I know that this is probably a topic that I was told to stay away from, I think that it's incumbent for at least me to state my opinion and my beliefs on this. Anyone that has been to one of the 21 meetings that Tammy has graciously hosted, it's been back and forth, and I want to thank Tammy, as well as Mary Coe and Claire Gertin for running these meetings, because sometimes it's, it's not particularly easy. For me, it's the issue of should dogs be leashed in Skunk Hollow or not? For me, I believe that they should, and I believe it's incumbent that they should. Number one, as I said, I've spoken about bags of feces, I've spoken about noise, proximity to the willows, hair and all that stuff being blown around. But really what it comes down to is safety. Is safety for the children and the parkgoers that don't want a dog that is unleashed if the owner can't find it. And there have been cases where owners can't find their dog, and their dog is running around. Some of the people on this board, like myself, may or may have had children, and I will tell you, I have an eight-year-old. I've always taught my eight-year-old, if a dog approaches him, or to always ask, really first, always ask the owner, can they pet this dog? My eight-year-old, who's eight and can communicate, won't have that choice. If a child is three years old, he doesn't have that choice. And God forbid it's a bigger dog and it jumps on him, or it bites him, or the kid falls down the hill, you have a big problem on your hands. So what I've heard from different people is, people that have called me, is it's not enforceable. Correct, to a certain extent, it's not enforceable, and I want to say enforceable in air quotes, right there. But it's kind of like speeding. You know, everyone goes maybe 36th and a 35th, and it doesn't matter, really, I don't want to, well, the chief is in the room, unless you get into an accident. Now, if you're getting into an accident, then you've established you shouldn't have had the dog off the leash, and now it's, you can kind of point out where the liability is. So for the sake of the, the children, really, who don't. Pardon?
And the old ladies.
You're not old. But I really, really think that, at least my opinion, and I'm not speaking for staff, I'm not speaking for this board or Parks and Rec Board, I think that really the buck stops with this board. So whatever happens, and I'll be stepping off wherever it goes, I think that, I don't think, we always talk about safety, 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 safety. Safety is paramount in Radnor. And if we talk about our kids and safety, I think all dogs must be leashed on, at Skunk Hollow. So that's pretty much what I want to say with that, and I'm happy that I got that off my chest. Thanks. Oh, and one more thing, real quick. Great job, I know Marte is here, Radnor Fire, great job with the tree lighting on Saturday night. I know Commissioner Maroney, you were there. So it's just, Radnor is really a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and that's really what we all want to keep, so keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farhi. It was a great event at the tree lighting. I, I just want to be clear that although I'm grateful to hear your thoughts on that issue, the dogs in Skunk Hollow is not an issue in front of the Board of Commissioners. We are allowing the process that we have in place to do its work. We have advisory boards, Parks and Recreation Board is, you know, aptly led by Mary Coe, you know, managed by our own Tammy Cohen. I know you, Sean Farhi, have been very engaged with that committee, but we have residents who are volunteers, who step up to serve on these committees, and they put their heart into it and the hard work, and I know I've been watching these meetings, I've, I know that the Parks and Rec Board, you know, feels very strongly about it, they're really have been allowing the community to express themselves as, as many times as it's going to take to hopefully get to a recommendation that then they will bring to our board of commissioners and we can react to. Right now, there are a lot of suggestions and not a fully baked recommendation coming forward to this board. So I just want to be clear that we are not voting on that now. If it does come in front of the Board of Commissioners, it will be widely advertised so that we can get people here, but, you know, I don't want anybody thinking that we were presenting it here at the commissioners and to come out to, you know, articulate your feelings here. You are best served to continue to work through the Parks and Rec Board, and when it is ready, the commissioners will be ready to take it on.
I hope I said that, I just said after.
You did, I'm just emphasizing.
After 20-plus something meetings, I think that it is time to.
It is time. I would love to get it, but it's not come to us.
And I want to give my opinion before I step out.
I appreciate that, and I value your opinion, I just want to make sure that people understand that we're not brushing this under the rug at this board. We are not yet addressing it because it's not fully baked for our consideration yet. So I'm just making that clear. That said, any other reports from board liaisons? Great.
So I'm the liaison to the Board of Health, and just wanted to report that we do have two new high school student interns that have joined the board for the year and have selected some projects that are still being refined, but one clearly sounds like it's about bicycle safety and storage, bike wrecks and the like, and one is about high schoolers and fatigue. So they're refining those further, and I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Excellent. Other reports? This isn't exactly a board liaison report, but I want to put a plug in for our comprehensive plan virtual community workshop survey. So it is, there are some bookmarks out front for those of you who are here tonight and you want to grab it, it's got a QR code where it'll take you right to it. Otherwise, go to radnor2035.com. Very easy, radnor2035. So I think we're looking at a plan that'll take us through 2035. It's a really interactive way to let us know what you're thinking about important issues that face the township and that we should be thinking, envisioning, and designing for in the future. So you've heard about the comprehensive plan, this is a major part, element to this planning process to solicit feedback from the community. So I urge you to go in, click on the link, take the survey, tell us what you think, because we're going to read every single thing that comes through and be able to incorporate that into our thinking when we're drafting the plan, which the timeline sets us for presentation of the plan by sometime this summer, probably late summer. So let us know how you feel. And with that, I will ask if there's any new business and any old business.
Question for Steve Norsini, Mr. Norsini? Sorry. Are they going to repave Conestoga from Lowry's to, is that going to get, because it's half paved, half not, does that get totally repaved, or are they just going to keep it like that?
So the first section that was done, that you see paved?
Like half of it's paved.
That, that is the complete project. So PennDOT's requirement is the affected lane where the pipe work was done gets resurfaced. And so other than them coming back to put the white line from just east of 320 of Sproul Road, there is one area there that's not done yet because they have to replace a valve, but from there down to Lowry's Lane, where they've worked first, that paving is complete. And just to remember, that work is done under a PennDOT permit and restoration is PennDOT specifications.
First of all, just my opinion, it looks terrible, the road is uneven, I don't particularly think it's safe, and if PennDOT or Aqua or whoever wants to fix the road, they should, and this is my opinion, they should return it in the condition or better condition than they found it. And my opinion, and I think anyone that drives by and takes a look, is that it is not as nice. So are there any, is there anything that we can do other than repaving it ourselves, which I'm sure you don't want to do, to get PennDOT or some of these utilities to, you know, leave it as they found it or make it better, but not make it worse, and then?
So Mr. White and I have had the discussion also, we have limited authority, as in none on these projects, to be honest with you.
Can you just tell them that you don't, that they're not allowed to do it?
Well, that being said, I will reach out to them. So no, it's a state road, it's a state permit, we don't have the authority legally to say, no, you can't do it. What I will do is reach out to the project manager and to PennDOT and to look at specific areas of their restoration and bring that to their attention, Commissioner.
So if there's an issue with the road and someone gets injured or hurt, who's liable for that?
I'll turn to the solicitor, but.
We don't need to do that hypothetical tonight.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious.
I mean, it wasn't our work, not our street, I guess that's the best way to put it, Commissioner.
So we don't have no liability?
So I am going to call for, unless there's any other old business, I'll call for public participation. Does anybody like to speak tonight? I'm not seeing any. I'll call for a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye. Good night.